All right, folks, it's six o'clock. Welcome to the Mount Pleasant City Commission Meeting of April the 20th. We'll have a call to order. And Ms. Willie, if you do the pledge and is Roberts right there, if you'll do the invocation, please. So we'll call the meeting to order and do the pledge and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands one nation, one God, and in this world, the peace and harmony.
We're bowing in this place. There in the valley of the east, you say the Lord so thankful for his grace as he's given us. Thank you for these blessings in our life. Thank you for protecting and watching over each one of us and our family members. The God that she continues to provide that protection for us, guide and lead the discussion and decisions made here to that benefit of the residents here, President and the residents here at Mount Pleasant. Give you thanks and just praise you for all that you've done in our lives. In this name we pray.
Amen. Thank y'all very much. All right, roll call, please, ma'am.
Here. Jackton Cranberry?
Here.
Mike Davis?
Here.
Eric Harvey?
Here.
And Willie Alberson?
Here.
I'll pray.
Thank you, ma'am. Approval and correction of minutes from our study session dated March the 11th and regular meeting of March the 16th. You have those in front of you, which you've had an opportunity to review. I'll entertain a motion.
And Mayor and Commissioners, hey, before of the regular meeting, we added some numbers so that the whole budget for this flash pad that we shared with you in a piece of paper is in that paragraph. And so to me, it's clearer that way. So since you've gotten these, we've added those numbers and everybody has it highlighted there. That's the only change, and you received them over the weekend.
Any questions on those corrections?
Mayor, I'll make a very good thing of thirty session minutes and the regular minutes with the corrections that take.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a number of seconds. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, awards, presentations, and appointments. Mount Pleasant Historic Zoning Commission, we've had a young lady that has had to go off, and we have a young man that has stepped forward, Mr. Chris Irvin. For those of you that might be familiar with it, it's North Main Street on the right. If you're going up, it's Walnut Grove. It's that historic home that's there. And they certainly, because it's an historic commission, he certainly has a reason to serve on that. He'd ask if he could, so. Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? I know Chris myself, manager of Timco, so he comes with some business after we've been doing, so. I move that we accept the nomination. Have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, completion and review of unfinished business from prior meetings. A, Ordinance 2021-1064. This is a public hearing and the final reading, an ordinance to amend Title 19, Chapter 3 of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code related to gas.
And Mayor and Commissioners, this specifically addresses deposits. And if you remember, last month, we had it in front of you, but the copy that I had in front of you did not include residential. So, commercial deposits are two and a half times estimated monthly use. That's our current practice. And residential is 125 for a homeowner and 250 for a renter. And as the mayor said, this is the second reading, and we would follow this practice once adopted.
Understanding this is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience that would care to speak? Please let the minutes reflect no one wanting to. That'll entertain a motion. Move that we accept Ordinance 2021-1064 as presented. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. B, Ordinance 2021-1068. Again, a public hearing and the final reading, an ordinance setting Mount Pleasant Parks and Recreation Department Ballfield rental rates for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
And Mayor and Commissioners, this is the, a public hearing and the final reading. The only changes that have been made since the first reading is some of the leagues said that our time constraints for them to get information to us was too tight, so we've loosened it up a little bit and said, you know, before the leagues, the games start, you have to have such and such in. But we're kind of just putting in writing what our current practice is. And put a price tag on a tournament that wants to use our field for an entire day. We've been charging it, but we wouldn't have been writing it.
Very good. All right, again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone in the audience care to speak? Let the minutes reflect no one offered, please. With that, entertain a motion.
Make a motion with 20 and 1068.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. C, Ordinance 2021-1069. Public hearing, final reading, an ordinance requiring all leagues affiliated with or using Mount Pleasant Parks and Recreation Department facilities to execute a league charter and abide by a code of ethics.
Similar to the last ordinance, but this has all of the forms that need to be completed by, by the league, so. And then, obviously, we have language in here about doing background checks, and if you're not following the rules, specifically what the punishment is. So, kind of our, again, our, our practice that we're reducing to writing in ordinance and updating it in existing ordinance.
Okay. Again, this is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience care to speak?
Are we responsible for the background checks of that?
Police department doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we won't put them in charge.
No, that's what I was saying. I was making sure.
Oh, me. Again, it's public hearing. Anyone care to speak? Again, if you don't mind, I'll let the minutes reflect no one cared to. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept Ordinance 2021-1069.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, monthly report from Mayor, and I'll be very brief. I received a letter dated March the 26th from the State of Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. It says that they recently did a compliance on our bio-modern reinspection from the wastewater treatment facility. No violations were noted on anything at all. Congratulations.
Did you say bio mag?
No.
No.
Bio monitoring.
Oh, okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
No bio mag.
I just wanted to make sure.
No bio mag. But that, that's great news. That's, that's a lot of hard work that has gone into that. So, that's all I've got. Number eight, monthly financial and budget report.
If you all received the, the report this weekend, the only thing we have to note is that starting the first of May, we'll be training on and changing our old vendor that does our old credit card processing. And that will actually enable us to be real time, so that when somebody pays or goes out there and looks at their account, it's gonna be current as of that moment.
Real time.
It's been an issue for sure, yeah.
Yeah. I've heard number.
They've been able to go online, but they don't know what they owe.
Right.
And it also enables them to, there'll be phone numbers, there'll be two different phone numbers that, that they can actually make payments by phone, which we have not had the ability to do, but to them.
All right, anything else, Ms. Loretta? Everybody got Loretta's reports. We're in good financial condition. We continue to be right on budget for the most part.
I did notice revenue, property taxes, the collections are down quite a bit. The only place, the only thing I can think of is maybe the COVID, that we were just a little bit later on that.
Right.
About eight percent, did you say?
About eight percent.
Eight percent, yeah.
So it, it wasn't enough to be noted, but again, it, it was assessed. They'll have to pay attention.
Yeah, that's true. Any questions of Loretta? Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion for the March Monthly Financial Budget Report.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from City Manager.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, just a couple positive things are going on, for sure. We, since we met last, we had Easter egg hunt was very successful. It'll be much bigger next year, but we stepped in when the chamber did not want to do it this year, and that turned out really well. And the video that was filmed here in August by Kane Brown, Worldwide Beautiful, won first place in the American Country Music Association.
You're it.
The video that was filmed here, so we'll take some credit for that. And then, if you haven't been by this flash pad location, it's under some serious construction. The, the plumbing is in, and you'll see concrete shortly. And then, the last thing I want to mention is you all have a packet in front of you that this is what you'll need to bring on Saturday to the strategic planning session. Starts at, we will be, starting at nine, we'll have some light food, so come a little bit before nine to get coffee and that kind of stuff. All you need to pay attention to between now and Saturday, this is your homework assignment, is the first paper clip is what we said in 2017 we wanted to do, and then what we've accomplished. And I just want you to look at that, so you can see where we are. And then, there's three sheets that we'd like you to just complete, you know, asking things like, what are our strengths? What is your wish list? That kind of stuff. Just, we'd like to have that already completed when you come in. And then, all of this tiny, tiny detail will all go in, in detail on Saturday. And we think that we can get everything done Saturday, but if we can't, I'm not worried about it. We can set another two hours aside on a different day. So I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page, and we have plenty of time to discuss your priorities and everything else, but, so, keep this, do your little homework, and bring this on Saturday.
It is going to be held at First Farmers and Merchants Bank in downtown Columbia, park in the back parking lot. And come in the back door, you'll see a set of steps going down, and that'll be the door you'll need to come in, please. We'll have coffee and water and everything there for everybody.
That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Number 10, special reports from other city departments or committees if applicable. A wastewater liaison report.
So, as I talked about in the study session, Mayor and Commissioners, sewer trunk line is still kind of at a halt right now, waiting on the curing in of the pipe. And it's just because of the high waters that we have in the lagoons and heading into the sewer plant. Rainy Street is about to be bid out. They've been submitted, bids have been submitted to TDEC. And then, on the Influent Pump Station, we got permission today to bid that out. It'll be in the paper on Thursday, so that is all just moving forward as it should be.
Okay. Any questions? Do we need a motion on that?
No.
No, I didn't think so. Mount Pleasant Gas System report?
No report this month.
Okay. Other than we're getting the, getting the deposits and a bit more in line where they ought to be.
Yes.
That's important. All right, number 11, new business. A, Ordinance 2021-1070. This is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, lowering the speed limit on Main Street.
So Mayor and Commissioners, this is North Main Street. We did have MTS come in and take a look at this, and they agree with these recommendations. So, heading north from City Hall, it'll be 25 until you get to the Shell Station. It'll be 30, 30 until you get to, right now, where it turns 45, and then it'll stay 45 until you leave the city limits. That's the biggest concern we had, was out there in Hamilton Court, it was 55 miles an hour. But this is a first reading. It won't, it won't be final. We talked at the study session on Thursday about how, when and if it does pass next month, we'll be doing a public education. Our goal is not to go pull everybody over immediately, but to let people know that the speed limit has changed and work with everybody until everybody's aware of it.
I asked Chief Hay about this, because I just don't want this to, as Kate said, I don't want everybody getting tickets. And the chief has said that he's got access to the state's big signs that flash that say whatever, this road may be closed or whatever. And he's gonna coordinate with them, so we can do this when we can get those signs, so that we don't do it and then put the signs in, try to do it all together. I, I did a study on it today myself, and it is 1.9 miles from where it turns to 55 going north to where the 45 would be. So, in 1.9 miles, in my simple math, man, it's gonna take you about 30 seconds longer.
Yeah.
And it could save a lot of lives, because I know a number of us come through there, right there in Hamilton Court, between all of the housing and everything. It's there, you got a lot of young kids going back and forth across the roads, and people in and out, and it's just, just safer, so I think it's a good idea. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Go ahead.
Move that we accept 2021-1070 as presented. Have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. B, Ordinance 2021-1071. Again, this is a first reading, an ordinance considering a recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding a requested amendment to Title 14, Zoning and Land Use Control, Chapter 2, zoning ordinance of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, the same being the zoning ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including the Municipal Zoning Map Incorporated therein.
And Mayor and Commissioners, this was in front of the Planning Commission as a request from the property owner to go from highway commercial to light industrial, and the Planning Commission declined that. And whether they vote to approve it or not, the ultimate say is with the City Commission. So, you, you need to vote that you agree with the Planning Commission or do not, and Cory has put the beautiful orange. We're still working on the red sign for you, Ms. Cranberry, but, and Ms. Harvey. But those are points that we need to, we don't just vote based on what we think of zoning, but it's based on how it impacts, you know, our zoning ordinance and, and other things. So if you'll take a look at that whenever you are making your motion. And Roberts here, we can answer any questions you may have.
How close is this? I guess, you know, when it was first, did it with a cement plant or whatever?
I've heard that, yeah. I, I don't know.
Was it zoned then or, or not?
We've never been able to find records that it was zoned light industrial, but keep in mind how poor the records are from the past.
So what is it zoned right now?
Highway commercial.
Highway.
Even, even for the, I guess, where the person is keeping the vehicles or whatever?
Right. Well, that was something that should have never been allowed in 2015, before I was here.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we were able to go back through the BZA and say, you can only have this many vehicles here, you have to put a, a screen in your fence and a few things kind of after the fact, but it's, it's something that I don't think should.
Does this land adjoin that?
Like, yes, you can enter it to the left of that, and then it's all the land behind it.
Behind it. Backs up to Redwood, so.
And a lot of people from Zion Road that were here that were concerned, because they believe it's always been agriculture, agricultural and residential. And we received quite a bit of phone calls from Redmond Circle, but a lot of those people did not show up, but we did get phone calls of concern.
Did we, I guess, talk to these people like we did with the rail system? You know, to let them know, I guess, exactly what is going here and that it might not affect them?
Well, the Planning Commission, the owner had an opportunity to make a presentation on what they were gonna do, and.
I just want, I just want to be fair.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I will, I will.
Mr. Davis, we do send out letters to every owners within a term of the radius. I've had conversation with many of those, because they call my office after the letters go out, and then they had opportunity to ask questions at the public hearing, the Planning Commission. I think that those that did have questions and they came and things were answered in that form, but they were all notified as to any other rezoning plans.
In five years, it'll be, you know, it'll be something there, in five years. Too, too much is moving.
Yes.
I hope it's residential.
Yeah.
Maybe Mr. Barry will consider that.
So this will need two readings.
Yes, absolutely. This is, again, the first reading. Any, any other comments from the commission? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Does Mr. Barry want to speak on it?
Mr. Crossco?
Mr. Crossco.
You want to speak on it?
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. I had, I guess, second thoughts of it, just because of the way some things are, but Jim, sooner or later, maybe y'all can come back in front of the Planning Commission again, that a disappoint from our conversations and going over our fact finding, make a motion as the Planning Commission did to deny.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
We need to include some of that language. It's on your sheet there, possible.
Well, I thought, I thought I.
You said no? Are you okay with that, Cory?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
I mean, I did, you know.
You touched it. We, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. This just seems to be a little bit of a concern. Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Here, White?
Yes.
Jackton Cranberry?
Yes.
Mike Davis?
Yes.
Eric Harvey?
Yes.
And Willie Alberson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, C, Ordinance 2021-1072. Again, this is a first reading, an ordinance considering a recommendation from, from the Planning Commission regarding a requested amendment to Title 14, Zoning and Land Use Control, Chapter 2, zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance, there's a lot of words in it, of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, the same being the zoning ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including the Municipal Zoning Map Incorporated therein.
And Mayor and Commissioners, this is similar to the last one. This is the area of North High and First Avenue. They actually had two rezon requests, requests in front of the Planning Commission. One was allowed, and it was some townhomes. This is more of the commercial area where they wanted, they were wanting to put in some safe storage, and the Planning Commission denied the request to split the rezone of the property and, and make any changes to the zoning.
This is across from the Ballfield.
Yes.
Any comments? Questions?
The world residents here, all of it, and they just didn't feel like we needed another safe storage there, and there was quite a few that complained about it.
We did have a lot of residents here for that.
Quite a few.
Okay. Good to know. Anything else? Any other comments? Being none, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept Ordinance 2021-1071.
For?
The condition affecting the area have changed with significant intent to warrant amendment to the area's land use plan and sequentially the zoning map.
Good. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
It has not changed. Is that what you said? Or it has? This is.
We're denying.
We're denying it, because the, because the zoning map has not changed.
It has not changed.
And did you say ordinance 1072?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Got a second? Let's do another roll call vote, since it is what it is.
Here, White?
Yes.
Jackton Cranberry?
Yes.
Mike Davis?
Yes.
Eric Harvey?
Yes.
Willie Alberson?
Yes.
Motion carries, a second.
Thank you very much. All right, D, Resolution 2021-9, the resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, to authorize the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Loos Designs for construction documents for administrative offices and secondary fire hall.
And Mayor and Commissioners, as you know, this is, has been put out, advertised in the newspaper, and the selection was Loos and Associates. This is now when we get down to the actual design of the fire hall and the administrative building, right down here at 209 Bond Street.
Bond Street, where the radio station, where the radio station formerly was.
Old radio station building.
For everybody's information, we purchased that property back about a year and a half, two years ago.
Two years ago.
And the Fire Department has already done a considerable amount of work on it for us. All the windows are already in.
Doors, gutters.
A lot of stuff has been done with our, we were able to do it with our own people at, at times, but it's time now to get architectural drawings, and let's get, get this done. If you think about the, the response time that it's gonna enable the Fire Department to respond south or back west, particularly over into the historic district that we're gonna have, it's gonna cut that response time dramatically.
Does that mean we'll have to hire?
Yes, we've already submitted a grant for personnel, but it would cover the first three years.
Three years.
We do. How long do we think it'll be before it's occupied?
Uh.
A year?
I'd say spring of next year, the latest.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a lot of construction going on in the next year.
Yeah. And Phillip and his whole staff deserve a big out of boy for what they've done with this.
They've already gutted it, yeah.
Yeah.
How many do we think we'll, you know?
Uh, it would be three at the minimum, yeah, to keep that many on.
But as we grow.
Mm-hmm. And we're, we have a lot of people coming to us that want to do housing developments, and so it's, it's coming.
It's coming. All right, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, favor Resolution 2021-10.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. We have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, E, Resolution 2021-10, a resolution by the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, declaring certain Mount Pleasant Fire Department inventory as surplus property and authorizing the sale of this property.
And Mayor and Commissioners, we do this quite often. This, this is just one item, and it's a law, a lawnmower, lawnmower in the Fire Department.
Yeah, we've had other departments that've won.
No. We haven't found any interested parties.
No.
And that's not being too good of a shape.
I think it's not mine.
No.
Top of the stage, I want to keep one, one.
They're having a bad.
All right. Any other discussion? Entertain a motion. Move that we accept 2021-10. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
That will go on Gov. Deals, and if you want to bid on it, you can.
Can, yeah.
But we can't.
Yes, you can.
Oh, we can.
I remember that Mayor Bailey had a problem with that, but it's a public auction, and anybody can bid on it.
Because it's Gov. Deals, it's all.
I knew, I knew before, you know, we couldn't.
Yeah.
We turn it over to them, and they do all the bidding.
We don't know who's winning.
Yeah.
All right, G. Approval of Debt Obligation Form CT 0253, and this is related to the police and the Fire Department leases on equipment.
So the paperwork that you have in your packet shows $88,165 in police and $24,000 in fire, and it shows the payoffs over the next few years. And we just have to acknowledge that in a public meeting, that that debt was taken on.
Any questions?
Can you make a motion to approve it? We didn't do that the last time, and it made the minutes read kind of strange.
So it's the very last thing in your packet. Oh, did we miss? Did we jump over something?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go right back. We'll go ahead and do this, and then go right back to that. I apologize. So if we, somebody just wants to make a, a motion to approve State Form CT 0253?
I make a motion to accept State Form number CT-0253.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. I'm sorry, I've.
Yeah, we went over.
Already checked over HVA. I'd already checked it. HVACA bid award.
Yes, so Mayor, last week, we received two different companies, McNeese Service Company and Morgan Brothers submitted two separate bids, and Loretta and I have talked, but I'll go ahead and let you make your, your recommendation, and ultimately, it's up to you to award it.
We did go back, you know, we had bid this out earlier, and upon recommendation of, actually, what would have been the award bid, at that time, we put it back out and changed the scope of work, because they just basically said what we had before was, would not be efficient. So based on that, my recommendation would be take the low bid.
Which is McNeese Service Company.
Local. Any questions for Loretta? We saw that Thursday. It was a considerable difference. Considerable.
Still a lot of money, but.
Still a lot of money, but it was a considerable difference.
Units are crying to be replaced.
And it's time. And you're local. All right. Entertain a motion. Move that we accept the HVAC bid award to McNeese. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, number 12, general comments from citizens, and I had three that have signed up. First is Mr. Fryerson at 411 South Main Street.
Just here to, to help, uh, concern, concern about the water and the frequency of the branches that need cleaning out, especially on South Main Street, uh, next to Mount Pleasant.
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll speak just briefly on the water. We have, right now, a couple of surveys going on. One of them, we have now gotten back, and it is on our website to read if you would care to. It's more related to what goes on behind the middle school, and then flows over back towards Sugarport Creek.
Yeah, Brookside.
Brookside and all that area. We are awaiting, uh, the one that covers Cooper and all the way down to.
He's here tomorrow.
He is here tomorrow.
That engineer's here tomorrow.
And, um, please understand, we've, we've got to go about this methodically, because I, I tell people this, and I know it sounds simple, and it probably sounds a little strange, but if the city takes the time to move a rock, we're responsible for that water once that lot rocks moved. So we've got to be very strategic, and that's why we've called MTS to come in and help us with this, to give us, all right, this is what you need to do. This is how you can do it. Um, because it, there are, there's some issues. Not going to sit here and try it tonight.
I went, you know, to Charlie's house, and matter of fact, we rode in that area over there. And the problem is, and Kate brought it up Thursday night, I guess, about talking about a resolution. The lot of the problem is, is people that owns these waterways, they let them grow up, whether they got trash in them or whatever. And like on Charlie's situation, that's what caused the water to overflow into his shop. Because Charlie went out there himself, him and, I think, Wilson, and they went out there and pulled some of that trash out to help that area. But Charlie, if, if we make the resolution to hopefully hold these homeowners, you know, that they don't have to keep that stream open, and hopefully, you know, we'll have some discussion on that.
So right now, the city does not have a stormwater plan. We are of a size that we're, it's not required. What we see, we have stormwater issues. So one of the things that will be talked about in our strategic planning session this weekend is, are we wanting to create a stormwater utility? And so you understand, if we create a stormwater utility, you have a water bill, you have a gas bill, you have a sewer bill, then you'd have a stormwater bill. Something has to pay to fund that sort of a program. And bigger cities do have that. I know Spring Hill has a stormwater utility, but right now, we have lots of ditches, lots of creeks, and a lot of them are not the responsibility of the city unless we adopted a stormwater program. And you have to look at it, and it has to be engineered, because if I'm going to impact this part of that ditch or creek, what am I doing downstream? What am I backing up upstream? So it's not a simple go out and clean it up, because we could clean it up and flood somebody downstream that's never been flooded before. So you really do have to have professionals take a look at that. We met yesterday with Tima. We're already doing some buyout work with Tina, but we are looking at a much larger project, and I'm talking 10 million and up, of looking at the entire city's stormwater and how we can improve that. And you're talking about Heylong, a stormwater pipe collapsed. It was an 18-inch wide stormwater pipe, literally just dissolved and collapsed, and the road caved in. It's probably 100 years old. And so we know that pipe goes all the way down Heylong, and we, we have to repair all of that infrastructure underneath before we ever even consider paving. So it's, it's a much bigger problem, and it's citywide. So we're going to be having some hard questions to talk about stormwater utility programs, funding, what's priorities, but it's, 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 if you think about it, in 2020, we had a February, a July, and a September event that were beyond what we had had in years. September was worse than 2010 flooding. And then this year, we've already had a March 25th. So that's four in about 14 months, and they've been critical in, in every area of Mount Pleasant. So there's not a quick fix, easy answer, but it's something that we certainly see as a priority.
But that's, but wait, what you're talking about, about all would be, it would be a huge increase on taxes.
Most, it's not taxes, it's utilities.
Utilities.
Most are charging in the area of $3 to $10 a month. So it's, you're, over the course of the year, it'd be, you know, 12 months of that, and then you have to sit and let that money build up after, you know, three to five years before you have money to spend in the stormwater program.
So you can't do nothing on the first.
Because you don't have any money, because you haven't collected it yet. So that's typically, if you're going to start that program, it takes several years to get it going. But it's, it's, it, I have not seen anything, even in the area of $20 a month yet. The cities that I've talked to, I think Spring Hill is $6 a month.
That sounds right.
And, but you know, again, they have 40,000 people.
Right, well, we only have, what?
Five thousand, but it, it's based on your households, and it's also based on your commercial businesses and your industries. Everybody would pay it.
Yeah, everybody.
But in Tennessee, according to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the creeks in the, uh, the creeks belongs to the state. It don't belong to, to the other people.
It's not that easy of an answer, unfortunately, because the state will talk about aquatic life, and if there's not aquatic life, it's not their responsibility. It's, it's very difficult to pin it down.
But on what you're talking about, if we go that route, then once we dig or lose something, then we're held responsible.
Right. You're going to have to add staff and every, it, it, you're creating a new department.
Yeah, whole new department.
Mm-hmm. And that's all they deal with is stormwater. I think Spring Hill has four or five in their stormwater department. And that's what they do. They're checking drains, they're, and even in, when I talk to Spring Hill, sometimes they complain, because they do have money set aside, and when a new development comes, they're robbing that money to do the stormwater for the new development, when really, it's meant for the existing problems. So there's, there, there's a lot of, of work to looking into that. And I'm willing to look into it, because it's just, it's citywide. It's, there's not an easy fix.
It's not just talk, it's real.
But a lot of that area don't have, don't have drains.
Pardon?
A lot of that area don't have drains over there.
Yeah, it's, it's all over the map. We have some drains. We have some drains that aren't working. We got some areas that are well-drained. It's.
Mr. Fryerson, it is in our crosshairs. It's trying to figure out how to pay for it.
Mm-hmm. Like everything else.
Any other thing for Mr. Fryerson? Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Number two we have is Ms. Judy Anderson.
Yes, uh, we are basically kind of connected together. We are majorly concerned about Glass Street. Our community, uh, people from Glass Street has come because of the flooding on Glass Street.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, there is a major problem when we see that, yes, we, I saw pictures that you couldn't believe about pretty good water on Glass Street, because water in both ditches. If you look at Glass Street Church of Christ and the ditch right across from it, they're both clashing, because there is no place for this water to go. So it's not so much that, uh, people have throwed trash in the water in the, in the ditch. There are just grown up trees, rocks, and things like that, isn't there? And the, and the, uh, and it can't handle, both these places can't handle all that water. The ditch needs to be dug deeper down in that, in both, in that area there. Also, the one that you come on, uh, Glass Street, past Union Street, by 407 or 420, right at the bridge there, all that water comes from the back, and it rushes into that main area on Glass Street, right there beside, um.
I mean, Roger's problem.
The bridge.
The creek right in there, it's Roger's problem.
It's filled up with rocks. It's filled up with a lot of debris, and it needs to be cleaned out. So these are the problems that they're seeing, that it's flooding, and it's scary for people that have, this is their life. This is their home. And when they see that this water is rising up more and more, it's scary on a young person, middle class person, and a retired person, especially a person that's been there for years, and all of a sudden, this will come up, and they're standing, they're scared to death. Like, what are we going to do?
Well, again, we've, we've got it in our crosshairs. We're trying to decide how to address it, uh, because again, you have to be so careful with water, because you accept liability. And again, we've got MTS that's helping us with this. Um, it's not going to be a quick fix. I'm not going to try to convince you it will be, but, uh, it's real, and we know that.
And Glass Street experienced the same thing that I've never seen before, like on Heylong, where the water got underneath the pavement, and the pavement was going down, popping up and going off into the, the grass. I've really never seen that happen before. Um, and I, I know you can tell, we've been out there, and we've been patching it, and that's, that's really all we have the ability to do right now.
Yeah, hopefully that's going to level off, kind of like a roller coaster when you drive it on there.
Yeah, we tried to get a roller.
I tried to, I went through there Sunday.
Yeah.
And another thing.
But that's a temporary fix. It's just something that we're trying to do.
Right. Where people's driveway, and there's the ditch there. A lot of the ditch are clogged up with debris and grass and things like that, and water can flow through them.
And that's the point that Mr. Davis was making, is that a lot of times, those ditches are the landowner's responsibility. They may think it's the city's, and passing something that makes it clear that it's their responsibility to keep it free-flowing and, and get the debris out of it. There's a general thought process that people think all those ditches are the city's property, and they're typically not. They're typically, were, that was the drainage that was created when the neighborhood was built, and they have not been maintained. I mean, some of them have 50-year-old trees in them, and it's part of the problem.
But we're seeing grass and debris, and so each person that has that drain, um.
We, we look at them, each of them individually to, we go back and look and see if there's anything that would show that it was part of the city or not. And we're normally finding is, like on Redwood Circle, some of those homes are 50 years old. We found the original plans that were dated in the 50s, I believe, and the engineer has a ditch running through the neighborhood to allow for flow. Well, that neighborhood owns that ditch, not the city. And I'm sure the people that live on either side of it don't know that, and they believe that it is the city's. So we're trying to figure out what we could pass as a body here that would make it clear to everybody whose responsibility it is.
About a lot of the time, the people there, people have lived there a long time, and, but then, there is a lot of building. It's like, where do we start? Where do we go from here?
Yep. And we've talked to other cities that created like a nonprofit, that got community volunteers out there and went out and, you know, because some of these people you're talking about probably don't have the ability to clean it out, and, and get some volunteer organizations to help with that, too. That's another, that's another possibility, and that's been discussed with the state as well.
Kate, I've been talking to some different ones, the Commissioner, me and Eric, so, um, we was trying to go get some high school kids for community service, or get the neighborhood cleaned up. Maybe we can go out here as a neighborhood and, or community and clean these ditches and stuff for the, for the homeowners.
Because we've got high school kids that have got.
That need community hours.
Those community hours.
Right.
So we are working on something, but it just takes time, because we got to get past COVID and.
And it takes time, and then my only other concern, and I know, I feel like I'm making excuses, but if we clean out an entire street, and all of a sudden, the water is rushing so fast to flood somebody downstream that we hadn't thought about, because we're not engineers, and now we have a new place that's never flooded ever, because we've made the water.
So like we did Glass Street, if we did the whole street, we still be allowed, but we did like.
Well, if you're talking about volunteers, it's not a city thing.
Yeah, we can't volunteer. We're not saying it's a city.
No.
That's different.
Yeah, okay.
That's why some communities have done that, created like a, a group of volunteers that are.
And we just get the homeowner to sign off that they're okay, that we cut that trench and, you know.
Mm-hmm.
And we're not professionals, so we just do the best we can do.
I encourage, but I would also encourage you to get some legal representation.
Because it's not from the city.
Not from the city.
Okay.
The reason that Kate said it, and I think everybody said it at some point, this is a systematic problem. So before people, get you really cautious before you make any, any major changes. And so that's what the help of these different engineers that are coming in and talking with, with U.S. Commissioners, it's giving you an idea of what the big picture looks like. And so we don't have just a bunch of people going out and making some changes that might help and be a quick fix, but it may create more problems for other people. And we just don't know what that is at this stage.
So we need to wait till we get all that done before we.
Before you do that. It'll be my.
Please don't hold.
Official legal advice.
Well, we got to be very cautious with it. I mean, we, the last thing we want to do is start creating more and more problems. But once they approve that, if the engineer says, yes, that's a plausible plan, then just know that, I mean, we've got high school kids that needs those community service hours. And so that would be a, a great way for the school system to impact the community in a positive way to help out those that need help, but they're.
Absolutely.
They connect the ranks.
Do what?
No, we're not cutting a rate.
We're going to do a long service. All right. Next, we have Mr. Milton Knowles.
Well, what I was going to address, I've already covered it, the, uh, Glass Street situation with the water and the, the road. So, and Mr. Ivan Rogers' property on Glass Street, where the water spilled out of the creek next to him, and he received a lot of damages last storm we had in September. So I just feel like it needs to be addressed a little bit quicker. I know y'all working on it, but we don't know when the next one is coming. And Chris and I, we cleaned that branch out right there last week, just before the summer, and it rained so hard, and the water got so deep, it took the debris across the street, and looked like somebody took it over and stacked it up there. That's how deep the water was.
Yeah, that's the September flood you're talking about. Yeah, that was, that was, like I said, worse than 2010.
I think each one might be getting a little worse. That's what I wanted to address and to keep Judy along with what she was talking about.
We appreciate it.
I think whether we want to, I, I've always been one of these, I'm not going to call myself a naysayer, but, you know, our climate is warming.
Yes.
And if you, and it's changing, and if you don't believe it, look at the floods we're having within the last five years. I mean, it's real. Okay, that's the only three we've had to sign up?
Mr. Fryerson back there.
Yes, sir. Briefly, please.
You mentioned that MTS is coming to, 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 to Mount Pleasant.
They already have been here. Uh, they have not given us the written report. They've given us a written report on the Sugar Creek neighborhood that's been flooding, and then there's a separate report on like railroad street properties and some of these ditches that are overflowing. They've not given us that report yet. And he's coming here tomorrow, but he's coming here for a whole variety of things, some speed limit things, some, uh, road studies, and that's one thing I'm going to say that, you know, we need that other report.
I was just going to ask, I didn't know that, that had been here already.
Oh, yeah.
I was going to ask, uh, well, if it's anywhere Glass Street, the boys, you could get on that MTS list?
It, it might already be on there, because we, after all the flooding in September, we were driving them all over. We had a lot of drone footage of the flooding as well, where we could show them above, look where this water's going. So it may, I'll, I'll look in that tomorrow and make sure that it was part of it.
But this here is just damage to homes, though, for most of it.
No, that's Tima that you're thinking of. This is just, where is this water coming from, and what can the city do and not take on huge liability? Um, and again, ultimately, I, I imagine engineers are going to have to be involved.
And, and right foot, uh, hey, we had mentioned, uh, the, the road on Glass Street was covered.
Correct.
That mean, uh, full of clients who. Did they make, uh, further plans to pick it up?
So technically, and this is another thing that will be talked about in our strategic plan, we don't have a street department in Mount Pleasant. We have a community services department that picks up trash and bulky and can patch holes with cold patch. We can't pave. Actually, Columbia doesn't even pave. That's all contracted out with a big paving contractor. I brought to the commission a couple of months ago that in Columbia, it's cost two million dollars to pave one mile, to mill and pave one mile. We don't have anything, any money set aside for that.
Well, the reason, the reason that I asked is that how she said it was a temporary fix.
Yeah.
Let me know if you may, that was, that the city was going to do something further than that.
Okay, so it's a temporary fix in that though, that cold patch will break up and, and there's the area right where I live as well. And then as soon as it breaks up, we'll be back out there filling those holes up again with the cold patch.
Well, I just wanted to, I just wanted to say.
I just want to make sure that you didn't think that that was something that was permanent and we were satisfied with it. It's just, it's just trying to cover up some of the bigger holes. But yeah, we'll stay on it. Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it.
I think he'd probably love to. That happened. Chris, he'd probably like to. But I'll tell you what I did ask Kate to do, Steve, so if you hadn't already heard the question, you're going to get it. You and I talked a year or so or two years ago about you had some machine that you were interested in looking at. She's going to get with you in regards to the strategic plan because I think it makes, it's beginning to make more and more sense where we wouldn't have to do a whole street, but if we could cut out, like on Glass, I'll give you, there's one spot out east, I'll call it, of the church, right there in front of a couple of houses. And thank the Lord, there's cold patch in there now because it looked like to me those holes were probably about that deep. So I think it's something that we need to really, really be looking at. And you know, we might get some grants through State Street Aid or whatever for that to be able to do that, but it's something we've got to look at. So we're going to be discussing paving and FYI, Saturday morning, we're going to be discussing paving.
I know, our favorite topic in Rayland.
Stormwater and paving.
Yeah, all right. That's all we've got.
Pay more money.
Commissioners, nice meal, Grand Mary? Right? Willie?
Appreciate y'all coming.
Yeah, thanks to everybody. Thank y'all for coming out and it's great to hear from the city residents of things that are bugging you and bothering you. I'll entertain them. Oop, I'm sorry, go ahead, Eric. I'm long-winded tonight again, so we can help, you know. All right. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Not so much. Got a motion in a second. All those in favor? Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.